Okay, it looks like we are ready to come back here after the lunch break for our Board of Supervisors meeting here on August 6, 2024. And we are on item 6.10, which is a hearing consideration of request for post-abatement hearing on account and proposed assessment of abatement 11195 Pingree Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California, APN number 035-491-26. And we have Community Development Director Maria Turner and Code Enforcement Manager, Marcus Beltramo. Floor's yours.
That was a very good introduction. I'll just hand the mic over to Marcus to continue.
Thank you.
And if I may, Vice Chair Grantle, so again, on the issue of the swearing of the witnesses, if there's anyone for this particular item in Zoom or out here?
I'm not noticing in the chambers if anyone's here on it, but I think maybe we'll check Zoom.
Derek Horn. He may be go by Derek Flattery. All right. So just to clarify that, the ones who were sworn in will also apply for this particular item, 6.10.
Okay. Excellent.
All right. I'll begin my presentation. Again, this is a hearing on account and proposed assessment for 11195 Pingree Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California. Here is a map. It is situated on Highway 20 at the western end of Clear Lake Oaks, outside of Clear Lake proper. The owner of record is Derek Horn. I believe he goes by Derek Flattery also, but on title, it's listed as Derek Horn. The property is owned R1, single-family residential. The lot type now is currently a vacant lot. At the time, we started our processes, it was improved with a mobile home. There was a fire on the property during, while the notice was in process, so we had to go through certain steps to address the issues created by the fire. At the time, we started the process, the property was in tax default. That was cured. The property has since gone back into default as of 6/32/2023 in the amount of $2,274.37. So, in order to kind of expedite the process and kind of give it abbreviated, I'm not going to go into the noticing part before the fire, as we had to write a superseding notice after the fire as additional violations occurred. So this, these are photos after the fire occurred, after the mobile home had burnt down. This property is really more commonly known, or what's identified about it, is it used to have garage doors as fences, and it was right on the corner of Highway 20 and Pingree Road, and that's kind of how people knew this property or could identify this property. As you can see, there's inoperable vehicles, there's miscellaneous rubbish, junk all over the property. Again, the home is no longer on the property, so it's a vacant lot, which storage on the lot was considered an accessory or secondary use. More photos of just miscellaneous items on the property. I would like to state for the record, this was one of our legacy problems. This was a property that's been in violation since I started my employment with the County of Lake. So this one was a big one for us to get down, and it was causing a lot of problems, and it's one of these magnet properties that attracts a lot of issues and creates a lot of issues. As you can see, there's still burnt rubbish. There was an orange porta potty on the property. During the process, he did move the RV onto the property and was living on the RV. So we issued several notices. We issued a first notice in March 29, 2022, prior to the fire, and then we issued a notice on April 27, 2022, after the fire, and then another superseding notice as additional violations had occurred on July 15, 2022. We cited several violations of Chapter 13 for conditions detrimental to the public health, violations contrary to the uses allowed by Chapter 21, the zoning ordinance, of rubbish trash, unsightly appearance, and inoperable vehicles. And then we also cited, under the IPMC, the International Property Maintenance Code, in Chapter 5, we cited that it was danger structure premises. These are photos after the abatement was done. The RV would move on and off. So after we had cleared the lot, he brought the RV back on the property, and he brought the two other vehicles back on the property. So it just kind of shows you that it's the individuals that caused these problems. Even though we had cleared the lot and brought it back into compliance, he then brought these vehicles back onto the property almost immediately. I would say almost within a 24-hour period, if not lesser. But the lot was cleared of, although the debris and the hazardous material. I do also want to extend my gratitude to the Lake County probation. They got involved with this property, and they assisted with us in informing the individual that he needed to remove these issues from the property, as he may have issues with his probation status. So that was a big help for us to finally get this individual to understand he cannot live in an RV on this property nor store items on this property. So that assistance was greatly appreciated. The individual now is living on a RV on Harvey and Mitchell, and we're addressing that currently. Contractor costs. So there was two costs involved here. We hired Leonard's Hauling to do, remove all the debris and the items from the property. That cost was $6,906.16. Also, prior to removing the items from the property, we contacted the landfill and asked them about the materials and if they had any special requirements. They informed us due to the type of metals, beryllium, lead, copper, that they wanted a test done. So we hired Adams Labs to do some asbestos tests and testing for the metals there before we could take them and dispose them at the dump. The cost of that was $1,720. Administrative costs amounted to $855.41. Staff is recommending the Board Supervisor approval lien in the amount of $9,481.57, and to direct staff to record a lien with the Lake County Recorder's Office, which then shall be delivered to the county auditor, who should enter the amount of lien on the special tax rolls. At this time, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. County Council will be looking at Section 13-7. Was this a noticed hearing?
We sent a notice, we did mail a notice out.
Of this hearing?
Yes. On, I believe the date was July 19. It went out. The individual, we mailed him notices over the entire span.
The individual didn't request this hearing, right?
No, he did not.
Okay. Then absent a request for this type of hearing, I'm just wondering if this is the appropriate procedure. Granted, I don't see anything in here that would allow the Board to consider imposing the lien absent an actual appeal and a hearing. I do see one paragraph that says, if a request for hearing is not filed, the enforcement official may order the work to be performed. But absent a hearing to come before this Board as far as what to do with the lien, I'm not seeing it in here. So is there a default procedure in which a property owner who does not file a request for hearing, that we can hold a hearing absent such request?
So this hearing is similar in structure to the previous two that we've visited today. No hearing, what I think that what you're talking about is a request for hearing is for the purpose of appeal. This is not that type of a hearing. And so we, the property owner does not need to request a hearing such as this one that is before you today. This is for your approval of the work that was done, so that we can go ahead and post that lien.
What alternative procedure are you citing to that?
The ones that we had a couple weeks ago was an actual hearing that was requested in appeal or in argument of the work that was going on. And so the effort then would have been on the appellant or the property owner to persuade the Board that this abatement action was not necessary and was, or was done in error. And so the lien would not have been approved. That's a requested hearing from the property owner. However, what we have today, the three that have been brought before you today, have not been appeal hearings or argument hearings requested by the property owner, but is rather just part of our ministerial process to come before you with the work that was done, so that you approve our next step, which is to post that lien and then have it added to the tax rolls.
So I think for this particular hearing, I think in part would be based on Lake County Code, Section 13-42, on the hearing on account and proposed assessment, and those sets of procedures following through with liens and collections under Section 13-43.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you. You said it was a legacy property. I'm sorry, I just closed my presentation.
I'm sorry.
Back up and share it.
Is there a certain slide you'd like me to?
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. If you can please share. I just wanted to show the picture where you show that it's been completely cleaned off.
Am I still sharing here? I'm sorry, Supervisor.
It should be like the last slide.
These.
Yeah, right there. And so if I'm correct, this is from the street looking into the property?
No, it's not. It's from the, the Highway 20 is off to the right. Pingree is to the further part of the photo. This is on a vacant lot to the west of this property.
So where exactly is the, so you're taking the picture from a vacant lot looking into the property?
Yes.
Because my problem is, it's not secured, which means that if this individual doesn't do anything, this property will become, continue to be a legacy problem. I know that in the past, and I think it was in Clear Lake Oaks, I kind of gave you some problems about putting up a gate, but I would still love to see at least some lumber or something to block entry point into this property, so that it doesn't continue to be on your radar, so we can really move on and take care of other things. I just wanted to make that statement.
And there was a fence, but I believe the fence was damaged in the fire. So that's something we'll take into account and under advisement, and we'll look into the future. But that is a real concern, is them being able to come back on the property and do this. And like I said, less than 24 hours, if not just 24 hours, they moved, they were already moving stuff back on. So I understand.
I know that there was no one else that swore in, so I'll go ahead and open it up to the public just for the sake of doing it. There's anyone on Zoom? Nope. All right. I'll bring it back to the Board for action. And I do know, this has been a legacy issue, so I'm glad to see it come across the pipeline, so.
Now, this property, we had to deal with it, and I'm, it's one of these ones that we're hoping will have a domino effect, and we can build momentum on and to let, send the message that this type of condition of a property was not going to be allowed to continue or persist.
Thank you.
Just in that further, I move to approve a lien in the amount of $9,481.57, and direct staff to record the lien against the property with the Lake County Recorder's Office, and after recordation, it shall be delivered to the county auditor, who shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment rule as special assessments.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you very much for the presentation and for the three items today.
Thank you.
So it looks like we're on our non-timed items, and it looks like we will start off at 7.4.
I didn't even see you. That's why I, yeah, good.
7.4, so consideration of Amendment Number 2 to the agreement between County of Lake and BHC Heritage Oaks Hospital, Inc., for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization in the amount of $350,000 for fiscal year '23 and '24. And we have Behavioral Health Director Elise Jones here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board, this amendment for Behavioral Health Heritage Oaks Hospital is for payment of acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization services, and will close out our fiscal year '23, '24 costs for that hospital.
Sorry about that. All right. Are there any questions? Open it up for the public. Not hearing anything. I'll bring it back to the Board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Amendment Number 2 to the agreement from the County of Lake and BHC Heritage Oaks Hospital, Inc., for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalization in the amount of $350,000 for fiscal year '23, '24, and authorize the Board Chair to sign.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. All right. We will move on to 7.5. Consideration of Agreement Between County of Lake and Creative Alternatives, Inc., Incorporated, for specialty mental health services in the amount of $100,000 for fiscal year '24 and '25. Director Jones?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Board. So this Creative Alternatives is an out-of-county provider of short-term therapeutic residential treatment services. These are services, these are formerly known as group homes. And so there, and I'm sorry, but we're going to be seeing an increase of contracts with Lake County for out-of-home STRTP placements. That's what it stands for, group home placements. And the piece of legislation that was recently passed, which changes some things about which counties are responsible for these, makes it so Lake County has to keep our kids on our medical and be responsible for those services. There was a previous piece of legislation that, again, I'm a little off my game today, I guess. I normally can recall those, but it allowed counties to presumptively transfer to the county where the youth was going. So if we had a youth that was going to a group home in Butte County, we would usually apply for presumptive, we would transfer that youth, and they are now Lake County, or Butte County's youth. If they would come back to Lake County, we would deal with them at that time. The new law says, for a variety of reasons, that wasn't such a great idea. So now the county of, the Placing County must keep and hold those kids. STRTPs are bill fee-for-service medical for specialty mental health services. So the room and board portion of that, I believe, is covered by DSS, but then the specialty services that are provided within the milieu, we cover. So again, this will be the first of many, I anticipate, since we have very few, if any actually, STRTPs in county for, for Lake County youth. So that's what we got going on.
No questions? Supervisor Green?
I appreciate how difficult it is. STRTPs is the highest of the high level of treatment options, but TURLOC, that's a long haul. So I think you're correct. There's no STRTPs within Lake County. I see Ms. Dylan Parsons here, but I don't know that there's anything in Northern California, so.
There are.
Do we have other STRTP contracts closer to home?
forthcoming. Will be more. some very, some youth with some very high needs that can be very difficult to keep safe. And so these placements tend to be, it's not ideal, but youth safety is paramount. It is far away, I agree, but.
All right, so I'll go ahead and open that up for the public. Is there any public input on this item online or on Zoom? Nope. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and Creative Alternatives, Inc. for Specialty Mental Health Services in the amount of $100,000 for fiscal year '20, '24, '25 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 7.6, or is it, is that all right? No, 7.5, I'm sorry. No, that was. Okay, so I don't, do you have another one?
Do I? No, if I don't, I don't. I'm good.
She was sitting there, so I was thinking she had. My fault.
Just being weird.
It is 7.6. Consideration to A, rescind action taken on Item 5.14 on July 23rd, 2024. Approval of contract between County of Lake and California Department of Social Services for Agency Adoption Services and Resource Family Approval. Family evaluations in the amount of $1,218,968 and authorize the chair to sign Adopt Resolution, or B, Adopt Resolution of the Board of Supervisors approving the standard agreement, Number 23-5021A1, between the County of Lake and California Department of Social Services for Resource Family Approval Program, Adoptions Program, Merge and Authorizing the Director of Social Services to sign the standard agreement, Social Services.
So, thank you. And I'm going to ask that there be no action taken on this today, hold it for a future agenda or request that it be removed. There are some errors that need to be corrected, namely CDSS does not want my signature, they want the Board of Supervisors' signature, so we need to correct the documents to reflect that.
Do we have any comments or anything of the like? No? So I'll open it up for public, as there's none here in the room, so is there any on Zoom? None on Zoom? So we'll go ahead, do we have to motion to do this or we just?
No, so we'd be pulling, essentially pulling the item for a later date under the request of the Director of Social Services.
All right. Well, if that's the case, then we'll look forward to this coming to us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So.
If we can do it quickly.
Do you think we can? All right, I think we can. So we'll go on to 7.2. Consideration of A, Bid Number 24-40 for the Supply of Bulk Number Two Diesel Fuel and Unleaded Gasoline. B, Nick Barbieri Trucking's Bid for Number Two Diesel Fuel and Unleaded Gasoline. And C, Agreement Between the County of Lake and Nick Barbieri Trucking for the Supply of Diesel Fuel and Diesel Fuel and Unleaded Gasoline from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027 and authorize the chair to sign. C, ACAOC, Stephen Carter, Jr.
Junior. Good afternoon, Board. So administrative office does this about every five years. We do bulk fuel for both diesel and gasoline as well as propane, that's why you see both of them on today. On June 13th, we sent out the request for sealed bids. That's where it's, we know it's going to be over 50,000. And we did receive two different, on this one, two different respondents, Nick Barbieri So what they bid on is just their, basically their profit margin above OPEC rate, the San Francisco OPEC rate of the day. So the trucking company, so I don't have to say it again, bid 10 cents basically profit and Westgate Petroleum was the second bidder, which was 19 and a half cents. So as a sealed bid goes, it goes to the lowest responsible bidder. So we are requesting that you allow us to contract with Nick Barbieri Trucking. I can't say it.
All right, are there any questions or comments or concerns? Not seeing any at the dais. Is there anybody on Zoom? All right, bringing it back to the board for action. And it looks like we have like a A, B, and C type thing going. Do we do them all in one or one at a time?
Your board may want to do it one at a time.
Okay, excellent. So we'll start off with A.
Move to approve Bid Number 24-40 for the Supply of Bulk Number Two Diesel Fuel and Unleaded Gasoline.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. B.
Move to accept and sign Nick Barbieri Trucking's Bid for Number Two Diesel Fuel and Unleaded Gasoline.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number, or actually C, letter C.
Move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Nick Barbieri Trucking for the Supply of Diesel Fuel and Unleaded Gasoline from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That includes 7.2. We'll move on to 7.3. Consideration of A, Bid Number 24-41 for the Supply of Bulk Propain. B, Westgate Petroleum's Bid for Propain. And C, Agreement Between the County of Lake and Westgate Petroleum for the Supply of Propain Fuel from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027 and authorize the chair to sign. Stephen Carter.
Thank you, Board. So again, we sent out the sealed bids request on June 13th for propane. We received three respondents, Feral Gas, 50 cents above cost, Suburban Propain, 25 cents, and Westgate Petroleum of 22 cents, which again, the lowest responsible bidder. And I do want to apologize to the two vendors that it took so long to get to the board, but we were having contract signature problems. But other than that, to your board for Westgate Petroleum.
All right. I don't see any comments from the board. If there's anyone online on Zoom that may have, don't see anybody, so I'll bring it back to the board for action. We have A, B, and C once again.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve awarding bid number 24-41 for the Supply of Bulk Propain.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept and sign Westgate Petroleum's Bid for Propain.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Westgate Petroleum for the Supply of Propain Fuel from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Westgate Petroleum for the Supply of Propain Fuel from July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2027 and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that's, 7.3 is now finished. Let's see, do we just have calendars now? Is that what it looks like? All right, so we'll go to calendars. Anybody want to start out? All right, Supervisor Sabatier.
I will forego my calendar today so I don't hurt anybody further with my voice.
All right. Go ahead. Supervisor Pyska.
Tomorrow, I have, I will be in Ukiah at 8:00 AM for NCO meeting. We're interviewing CEO candidates. And then I will be on my way home, stopping to tour the Artemis COPAC Center. And then Thursday, I may catch the second half of the Fire Safety Council meeting. I was invited to the PAER planning meeting and that's, PAER is an acronym, but I can't remember what it's for. I think it's, well, it's with NCO and the Fire, and the RCD. And then at noon, I've been invited to be on Secretary Crowfoot's monthly panel and the topic is wildfire. So we joined with Director Tyler from CAL FIRE and some other Deputy Secretary from Resource, Patrick Wright from the Wildfire Task Force and a few others. So doing that Thursday at noon. And then the governing board meeting for AAA. This is going to be a week. And then Friday is Bruno's birthday. I have it in my calendar. So don't forget that.
What are we doing?
We're staying away from you, my friend. But I am going to be going on a several hour tour with Clerk to look at all the CWDG projects in District Five. Then I have a call with a constituent in the afternoon. And then Tuesday, my meeting with Assistant CAO and then back on Tuesday.
All right. I'll go ahead and go finish up today's meeting. Obviously, we've got closed session next. Don't have too much on the calendar this week. School starting again for everybody, I think, today, tomorrow, most of the schools, you know, the Middletown District, I think, Thursday. So anyway, everybody going back to school, sports, fall sports going on too. So got all those in. Thursday night, math meeting. Friday night, or Friday, got the meeting with ACAOC.
ACAOC.
ACAOC, Stephen Carter, Jr. And going to get that done and then going to move along into next week. So I'm back here on Tuesday.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thanks. Just a quick shout out last Thursday to a continuum of care. Our North Lakeport Emergency Shelter has some things to work out, including making sure we protect that against both planned and unplanned power outages. And I'm appreciative that that group nudged a little planning forward and I hope to hear back on that. Today, a special meeting of Lakeport Fire at 5:30. Then I'll be going to Lakeport City Council to see the second of two proclamations today for Brad Rasmussen, the retiring Lakeport Police Chief, and also the swearing in of Lakeport's new police chief, Dale Stobie. Looking forward to that. Friday, I see a Big Valley G-Spec Committee meeting. I may, I may just zoom in on that to see how that goes. Monday, meeting with ACAOC Carter. And that's it for now.
All right. I'll start out with last week. Just wanted to highlight that on Saturday, I attended the Clear Lake Oaks Market. It's at Nylander Park. It was really, really cool to see all the vendors out there at the park. There's going to be another one next month. They have it monthly and so I'll put out information so that folks know. Apparently because of the conflict of other markets that were happening, there wasn't the full, the full spectrum of everybody there, but it was pretty, it was really still good to see. So was in attendance to that. Following the meeting today, I'll be jumping on the Farm Ranch and Rural Communities, Federal Advisory Committee. The meeting is in Pennsylvania. I opted out of going because I didn't want to miss this meeting or anything else.
Glad you didn't.
So I stayed. I can join via Zoom this time and so I just did so. Let's see, and I'll probably be doing the same tomorrow as the heart of the meeting is pretty much tomorrow. And it ends tomorrow as well. Let's see, oh, Earth in Clear Lake Oaks, East Region Town Hall. And then the CSA meeting in Spring Valley. Thursday, again, if there's any follow-up for the Farm Ranch and Rural Communities, I will, I will jump on that as well. There is, there is a meeting that will commence for the ad-hoc, so I'll be a part of that. There's also another meeting that I'll jump on Zoom regarding USDA veterans farming grants and so I'll be discussing or being a part of a panel to look at grants and whatnot and comment. AAA at 1:30 and Area Agency on Aging, and that'll be here at the Lakeport Hospice Office, right? So that'll be in person. Friday, I'm part of what's called the Institute for Local Government Sustainable and Resilient Communities and the Resilient Communities Advisory Panel. And it's the first meeting that we've had. I was recently asked to be a part of it, I want to say in early June, and so they've pushed it forward and so I'll be doing that. It's, has city council members, county supervisors, district board members for like special districts or water districts or anything of the like. So will be a part of that. And then of course, it's Bruno's birthday, so I could see now why he's trying to protect his voice so he can like sing that day or something, I don't know, but. So we got Monday, a CAO meeting, or ACAOC meeting with Stephen Carter, Jr. PG&E meeting, is that something we're doing or is that the week after?
It's next week.
It's, okay, so there's a next week PG&E meeting. And then Central Region Town Hall, that's in the evening at the Lister and Alpine Senior Center on Monday evening, and then I'll be back here for the board meeting Tuesday. With that, it looks like we've covered all of our agenda items except for closed sessions, so I'll go ahead and start reading those off. And my agenda is like, okay, there it goes. All right, so 8.1. Public Employee Appointment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1. Interviews for Animal Control Director. Appointment of Animal Control Director. And 8.2. Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in Response to National Prescription Opiate Litigation. MDL number, multi-districts litigation, is that what it is? Yeah. Number 2804, case number 17-MD-2804. With that, we'll go into closed session.